No blood sample, just DNA sample.
Norm, you're running a hell of a meeting tonight.
We're a little rowdy.
That's okay. The Celtics won, we're.
Yeah, we're in a good mood.
We're allowed to be. Okay, next thing, endorsement of the decision. We do have four people here, so we can.
Yes, you can.
So first of all, we have a decision on one ninety-one Berry Paxton Road.
Excuse me for one second, Tamika, just so you know, I don't know what we've recorded up until now.
Okay.
So hopefully you don't need it.
It was nothing substantive and I have it in a minute, so yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so sorry folks, we lost hearts.
I told a good joke, though.
Yeah.
That is true.
So the first one is the special permit decision for one ninety-one Berry Paxton Road, the denial. So this is a very simple one. It's basically a condensed version of our normal decision without all the bells and whistles because it's a denial, not an approval. And the important part, and I do have a signature page for you gentlemen, once we're done with the discussion. But it's the two reasons for the denial on page two. The, one, the applicant failed to provide the planning board with required application submission materials that the board deemed necessary due to the project's scope. And two, the proposed large vehicle repair and inspection use, which they never removed from the plan, is not compliant with the Village Center zoning district's purpose to target small neighborhood scale businesses, including retail, restaurants, and meeting places.
That's good enough.
Yep. So, so yeah, so basically we just, I already have all the motions that were already made and seconded. It's just basically just signing the signature.
Get the sign and we don't have to do anything else, correct? That's what I thought.
And I can process it through the town.
Sometimes in the past, you know, want to motion to endorse the.
To endorse. If you'd like to, you can make a motion to endorse.
I'll make a motion to endorse the denial of the special permit for one ninety-one Berry Paxton Road. Second.
Is the discussion here done? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll have to put the Richard in there because I'm the one that goes down to the registry.
Okay.
It's Charles R.
Okay, alright. Do you want me to put the initial?
From now on.
Okay.
Did we do signatures? He did, right?
Tamika, we did the board's signatures.
Yeah, we did those fairly recently, um, yeah, when Britten came on board.
Thank you. So that does it for that. So, the next one is the accessory dwelling unit decision for forty-seven Pleasant Vale Road. Just basic decision. Procedure, public hearing was closed on June eleventh. The various application materials, the various findings, for the various review criteria. Basically standard, not much change from other decisions, other decisions will be made on accessory dwelling units. And then the conditions that shall be constructed in substantial performance with. And as shown on the elevation plan and floor plan dated May twenty-first, this is in two sheets. All local permits shall be required. No more than one accessory dwelling unit on the lot. The owner occupied, obviously, which that is not being followed. Permanent CO is required. Short-term rental is prohibited. They need to record it with the registry of deeds. If they wish to continue to exercise the permit, must within thirty days of the sale submit documentation to the town planner stating that they will occupy one of the dwelling units. So if they want to continue, the special permit is sold. If that happens. And the ninth condition is what Britten brought up. A site plan showing compliance with all setback requirements of the zoning district shall be provided to the planning board prior to the issuance of any building permit, which I can get off the view permit system when the time comes. And then the votes that were made and then the signature page.
That was for the registered stamp, was it?
What's that?
Anything, you know, an engineer had to stamp it.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yep, yep. And that'll be done when they apply for the building permit. They'll have to provide that to the building department, so I'll see that.
I like that idea and, yeah, very, very much so.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question about the whole short-term rental thing. Is that, is it based on the adequacy to house? I mean, is housing someone?
No, it's.
I know there are rules in.
Right. Short-term rentals basically deals with Airbnbs. That's basically.
That's what we were trying to avoid.
Yeah. It's the whole Airbnb thing where, you know.
You'd be cycling people in and out of the house.
Yeah, and.
As opposed to having a family member or a relative or a kid that is there actually. That's why it was accessory, because we were afraid that it, we were gonna turn into Hotel Rutland.
Yeah.
Right, right.
With Airbnbs, because it just. And that, that makes the area, the community, because you got cars pulling in and out here.
And I think that should be in five years' time rehashed and allowed.
You think?
Yes, because you are trying to bring people into this town for vacationing and other things to spend money. Hopefully in five years' time, there's something there for them to come and see.
I wouldn't have a problem doing that for, under a building bylaw or something like, for houses. But I wouldn't wanna just attach that to the accessory. I'd rather have something set up for town premise.
I'm just thinking, what's gonna happen?
Oh, yeah.
When, and.
First off, I wasn't gonna be able to afford to live here by the time we're done, but that's another story.
In years to come, what, you know, who's gonna keep track of it?
Right. That's a good conversation to have.
And what's gonna happen when we get that rugby field?
Rugby field, wow.
Well, no, actually, I'll talk about that under planners report.
Yeah.
Because there's been, there's been some interesting activity on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't, I don't wanna be responsible for a tangent. And Tamika will give me the stick I.
That's okay. Tangents are good. I do it all the time.
So don't I.
Yeah.
It's on, it's recorded.
There's a plan that I do this. Just ask Leah. She's heard me scream many a times.
I know we, we have one more to go through, just in between here. I was going through some of this and.
Some of what?
You know.
That decision?
No, and I'm saying to myself, according to the, inconsistent with the town preferred use of land, according to the master plans and all the surveys, open spaces. Not that. And, but the other thing was, I'm saying to myself, where the heck did this come from? To conserve value of land buildings, including conservance, conservation of natural resources, and prevention of blight and pollution of the environment.
Blight and pollution means that's why we have different zoning districts, that way, that's why we have dimensional regulations and spacing and things like that. It's why we look at things like this to make sure that they're abiding by all the setbacks, to make sure that the, you know, the accessory dwelling unit is compatible and looks like the regular home. So it retains some of the aesthetics.
I can get, gather some of that, but in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, Perry Mason, what if I was to say? I'm gonna throw a handful of stuff up in the air and I'm gonna sue him because there's pollution on the ground.
That's private.
But it's the blight and pollution of the environment. Who's, who's, who's checking it out?
Come on.
Anyways.
Stop causing trouble.
I'm not trying to, I'm just, just throw it out there now so you guys can ponder it.
You're a natural at it. You don't have to try.
That's right.
Wow. You actually brought up a point that I gotta think about. Prevention of blight. That's a farming term where usually has to do with crops.
Yep.
You visual blight. I've, I've, I've seen the term used when it comes to.
Abandoned buildings.
Too, too much, too much signage on, you know, on a roadway that's, that's blocking views and things like that. That's considered blight. So it can have, it can mean different things.
Yes, it could be pollution too.
It could be. Yes, sir.
Well, that means the power plant in Rutland's not going up then, right? Coal-fired plant, it's not gonna happen?
Well, no, we're not gonna have a coal-fired, but we will have a woodchip-fired one.
Ooh, that would be nice.
Yes, it would. And not only that.
There's some up in New Hampshire, Vermont, that are, that are shut down that you can just portable port down here.
Not only that, I had a discussion a long time ago about having one right down here to pipe all the hot water from the boiler into the various town buildings, so they don't have to.
You know where they do that? It's called Minneapolis. They put a package boiler there and throughout the town.
Where's the gavel? Tamika, you use the gavel up there?
Never mind. Meanwhile.
Ah, I mentioned the gavel. There you go.
Okay, next, special permit for state lot on Brittenall Drive.
Yes, so again, standard decision with the various findings. The lot is subject to a special permit request that was created by an A and R on October two thousand sixteen. That's what brought them here to this point. So, the conditions, the estate lot shall be constructed in performance with the plans as shown dated October twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. Shall be for one estate lot with driveway serving only the estate lot. It shall not be further divided to reduce its area or create additional building lots. That will come up later. The statement that the estate lot shall not be further divided shall be recited in the deed for the, for the lot. Storm control shall be implemented and maintained. Rum off of, oh, I gotta change that. It's not Miles Road, it's Brittenall.
Yep, I didn't see that.
Yeah, so I'll have to fix that typo. And then the last condition, as a compensatory action, the applicant shall construct, repair, or rebuild no less than fifty feet of stone wall along Brittenall Drive in the vicinity of the proposed driveways for the lots known as, blah, 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 prior to the issuance of any building permit on the lot. And then the motions and the votes that took place at the last meeting.
Also, to endorse the special permit.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Um, the stone wall thing, um, is it ten feet off the road? Obviously, they know what they're doing, but is, is there guidance?
On Brittenall, there's gonna be no guidance because there's no, there's no official width of that road, if I remember right.
No, there isn't. And it would probably simply be, you know, looking, okay, where are the other stone walls?
Yeah, they gotta connect.
Yes.
And trying to match it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I saw that in North Borough. When the subdivision went in where I was putting in my gas stuff, what they did is they matched up and actually curved it around to the front where the entrance was. So it looks different because it's a hell of a lot newer, but it's matched up with the existing one. And of course, there's no right-of-way, there's no width of the road because it, literally it was, they defined it as rods.
So and the thing is, these stone walls, they're not, they're not stone walls done by a stone mason.
Right.
They're farmer dropping in stones from the field.
Young kids told, go build that stone wall.
No, go to the field.
They're not, they're not meant to keep anything in or out necessarily. They're more decorative.
Well, they was meant to kept cows from jumping over. That's pretty much it.
But not anymore, pretty much. This, not this one. This one's meant just as.
It was just to get rid of the rocks.
That's right. But being scenic, it has to be.
I guess, do you just go around and ask what neighbor wants a stone wall on front?
It's up to him.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, like I say, it's kind of, to me, it's kind of funny because it was, I don't know, like two houses, three houses up from where this lot is. The second owner of that house had a stone wall built. A very nice stone wall, I might say, but definitely much too close to the road. So in the wintertime, when we get a lot of snow, and they brought the big equipment in to move the snow, and it moved the wall.
Yeah, if you look at my property, my next-door neighbor.
Yeah.
Spent thousands to have his stone fence built to a modern standard. Then you come to my property line, I'm like, it's staying the way it is. Really, them rocks are not moving and I'm not gonna spend money to. Yeah, it's, and it is, it's big money because you gotta bring in a mason and then they place them and put them in like, anyhow.
So it's at their discretion.
All in favor?
Aye. Can we sign it with, with just the Miles Road Xed out and changed to?
It's just a signature page, so I'll change that typo.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Yes, that's why I do that, in case there is a typo that's noticed, I can go back and fix it.
Four hundred and fifty dollars. It looked, when I read this, I'm going like, it shouldn't just say, you're okay to do this.
Norm, you're lefty too, right?
Yeah. So see, it's, it's, you know, we, we believe in diversity on this board, right-handed.
Yes, and Norm, I don't write left, but everything mechanically and other things that has to do with targets are all left-handed. So, yeah, I've got a burnt arm all the time when I shoot because the ejection comes out.
Yeah, that was, that was a problem for me in the army.
Oh, yeah? Because all the, everything's.
Yeah, and I still, we got, we got in basic training on the fire.
That's the last thing you're gonna have to sign tonight, so.
And it was raining, we had all the ponchos on. And, you know, we went through, through the fire training. And once you're all done, the sergeant, the, I guess lieutenant, who's in charge of the range, would come around to every person and you had to answer back, no brass or ammo, sir. Well, right in the.
Was sitting there.
Okay, it was about six shells, you know, by my shoulder, so.
I'm collecting them, sir.
Stood in front of me, I just pointed. I said, oh my god.
Yeah, because, Norm, did you guys use M, M one, M one?
M sixteen's.
Oh, M sixteen's, okay. So you had the, oh man, that means you had to worry about the face and everything else.
I don't know, I never ran into a problem with that. It was a sweet ride, I'll tell you. Especially on automatic. Whoa.
Yeah, I haven't had that pleasure.
It's scary.
I don't have a switch on the side of mine that says A. S or A, short burst or single or?
Okay, next, we have a continuation of a public hearing to amend the subdivision regulations to put in the fire supply, you know, fire protection supply regulations, which.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, I did get an email back dated June seventeenth from town council. At first, when I saw the length of the email, like, oh no, but then only to say, yeah, you can do this at the end, it's like.
See, he told you four hundred and fifty bucks for your.
Exactly. So, yeah, so basically a long-winded way of saying, uh, yeah, the most.
You have the authority to do this and it looks good.
The only thing is.
He's charged by the war.
Right. So they basically said, we can do what we wanted, we can do this. And the chief was on vacation last week, so I didn't distribute this, but he didn't. Tim, he did at Massachusetts Professional Civil Engineer in section four. So there it is. So that, that was the only change that was required during, during the last public hearing, so.
Who knows, I'm a stickler, I just.
So, it should be ready for the board to actually close the public hearing and vote to endorse.
Is there any further discussion on that?
We'd love to have seen one built.
This is true.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think you're gonna see it. It just sounds like a very, very expensive way to build.
It does. And, and that sometimes kind of bothers me because if it, you know.
No, but if the state keeps adding rules, you'll see fire sprinklers in houses.
That I've already heard. That I've already heard that they're pushing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyways, um.
I just couldn't imagine.
I just, just love to watch them build one.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see.
Yeah, so.
I'm assuming it's not much different than creepy septic tank.
Well, basically, that's all it is, but there again, I just, I'd just see how it's laid out and, you know, how it's gonna function, that's all.
Anyway.
But I think we should get it, get it moved on, get it set for this fall.
Well, actually, no, it doesn't have to go to town meeting. Once you vote, it's, it's adopted.
Yeah, because it goes in the subdivision regs. So I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
So now, a motion to amend the subdivision regulations by adding blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, what, what's the, what does he have for the title page? The fire.
Fire Protection Water Supply Regulations.
So moved.
Second. Good.
Talking about abbreviating things.
Yeah, we could do an acronym, but.
Yeah.
No, no. I've, I've been fighting acronyms.
FPWSR? I don't even know how you pronounce that.
FPFSR District.
That's what I put in my shorthand for my notes, but I'll spell it out in a minute.
You can do that, yeah.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All adopted. Next up, discussion Hilltop Estates Homeowners Trust.
Yes, finally got a response from town council on June eleventh, so if it, if it pleases the board, I'd like to just kind of go through their responses to these. There's not a lot of them, there's about a half a dozen, so it shouldn't take long to go through them.
And then hear my frustration.
And here, yes, then you can, then we can hear your frustration.
I read this too and I.
To make sure that's reflected in the minutes.
I'll let Norm go and then I'll follow up.
The first one is, the planning board believes that snow removal on the roadway should be included in the list of items to be maintained by the homeowners. Homeowners, is that common practice? So the answer is typically yes, the obligation to maintain the roadway includes the obligation to remove snow from the road. But there's certainly no harm in expressing that obligation in the declaration. It could be inserted into section four and include retaining walls, any stormwater facilities on any individual lots, catch basins, ponds, outlets, et cetera. So would the board like to add that language recommended by town council into that motion?
I, actually, when I read it, I liked it because then it's sort of all-inclusive and it takes the DPW out of any responsibility at all.
I, I agree.
That's, that was, that's about the only one. We'll keep going.
Hey, we're on a, we'll, we'll take the wins where we can get them.
Alright.
So, number two. The planning board believes that the items should be responsibility of the homeowners in perpetuity, is that common practice? Said, I assume that the items you refer to are the roadway and stormwater facilities and other common trust property. Yes, maintenance of the trust property is the obligation of each homeowner acting by and through the association. It is a legally binding responsibility unless the trust is terminated or revoked. Some planning boards require that the declaration of trust to include a provision saying that the trust cannot be revoked without the town's consent, which is in here.
Good, yeah.
The purpose for adding this provision is to ensure that in the event that the associate is terminated, the homeowners have made some provision to ensure that the roadway and other trust property continues to be maintained. If Rutland does not seek such approval rights, I can delete the provision from article thirteen of the trust.
Freaking way.
Nope, leave in.
That's my opinion. I, I don't want any opportunity for that HOA to be revoked without going to town meeting.
Uh, it has to be the planning board. I don't think it's town meeting.
Oh, they don't, okay.
No, it's just the planning board.
Alright. I thought I'd have to go to the town meeting.
No.
To be, because it's a private way and you're gonna turn it into a public way.
Not, that doesn't, not necessarily. Well, yes, if the roadway should be accepted, then it has to go to town meeting.
That's what, that's what I was getting at. If their intent was to terminate the HOA and turn it into a DPW road.
I think you're talking about two separate things.
Okay.
They could terminate the trust. A byproduct would be that the town would potentially have to accept the road, so that would be a separate process, I believe.
Okay.
So, alright, so no, we're gonna leave that in.
Yep.
Would any town water sewer infrastructure within the town right-of-way be the responsibility of the homeowners or the town to maintain? That depends, the answer, that depends on the town's practice. If a town installs the water sewer infrastructure, it is typical for a town to accept such infrastructure if they are connected to the town's public water and/or sewer system. If the water slash sewer infrastructure is installed by the developer, some towns choose not to accept the same, in which case it should be expressly referenced in article three of the trust. So what is the board's reaction?
My understanding is, again, this is just experience-based, that water and sewer from the main to the house is on the homeowner, it's on their property. The mains, if I remember, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for Chris, I just remember what Joe said. The town wanted to, wanted to retain, that's why they want an easement for water and sewer piping. So my expectation is.
What's?
Yeah, my expectation was, part of the inspection process of those pipes, if, if whoever's putting them in, whatever developer's putting them in, has to have an inspection process by the DPW. Because I don't think the DPW puts that stuff in, if I remember right.
No.
Yeah, and, and it's, you know, the example that I'd say is, you know, Clea put it in the sewer down Main Street and it's trying to kill.
Right.
And the town accepted it.
Yep.
And in this case, for Hilltop Estates, part of that water and sewer is gonna be running along Brittenall Drive, which is a public road.
And then back up an easement over to the pump station, if I remember right.
Yeah, but then also up Hilltop Drive or whatever it's gonna be called. But I would think that the town probably would still want to own that.
My understand, again, I don't wanna speak for Chris because he's the new chief, but I didn't think the town wanted any private sewer lines in town ever again. We've got a couple now. I get that.
Unless, unless you mean within the roadway right-of-way. Not, not the ones.
Say private.
Not the ones going from the roadway to the house, those are.
No, the main, I should say the mains. They don't want any mains.
Okay.
Um, that are private. The, the, I, I agree, the, call them the service connections off of the mains, that should be the homeowners.
Yes, right.
I'm, I'm fine with that. So I don't know, do we, do we make that, do we make that description? Get to that level of detail that the town?
I don't know, I don't know if we have to. The, the only thing town council says is, if the, um.
Because it says infrastructure.
Choose not to accept this, but she's talking, she's not talking about on private property, she's talking about within the roadway.
I'm fine with that.
So, in which case it should be expressed. So unless the town doesn't want to accept, I believe, then that would have to be changed. I don't know if I'm reading that correctly.
That's why I'd like to know what Chris thinks.
Well, yes, the other thing that just popped into my mind, has Clea already obtained a sewer extension permit for this? And if so, what does it conclude?
That's a good point. That's a Chris call, that's a Chris question, so we should probably.
What, what do you want to find out? Obtained a what?
Sewer extension permit. Because he would have.
Sewer head water.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, because he'd had to do both.
Right.
Because he just, did he just come down that easement and put like a, a cap on a pipe there and stop?
The water, well, there's a fire, there's a fire hydrant.
Okay.
Right there. Now, what he did with the sewer, I honestly don't know.
Okay, well, that'll, that'll be a question.
So I'll have to email Chris in the coming days to find out about that.
Yep.
He had detailed plans, I think, in his, his paperwork. He had plans to show them going down the road.
Probably should ask Chris too about the, what, what does, what, in that permit, like Norm's talking about, what is the actual detailed sewer connection? Because if it's outside the, what's the word I'm looking for? Our plan details. How the heck do we hold anybody to a, you know, like, say, say Norman goes off of the new right-of-way and down the front. I'm fine with that, but a minute it jogs off of Brittenall and heads down that easement, it's, it's literally out of our control. And that's what. And that's what I wanna make sure.
Alright, so what questions do you wanna ask? I need to know what you wanna ask him.
Ask if Chris has the detailed designs of the sewer extension permit for Hilltop Estate.
And water.
Yeah, and if he's got that, I think maybe we should just look at it, just to make sure that.
Is it something that should?
I I mean, as long as Chris is comfortable, I'm fine, but I just wanna make sure that we're covered.
Way he, yeah, is he comfortable? As leaving it private, or yes, we want.
Oh, yeah, I I hope I hope he doesn't say private, cause that's that's a mess for the town.
Yeah, if if Chris wants, you know, control of going up the easement. Up the hilltop to the top. Yeah.
Exactly, cause it's already happened on um over on Brittenell and Palmagussett, where that uh pipes broke and backed up.
Let's let's see what information we get back and we can ask further questions.
Okay.
Alright, so that's it, I'll send an email out to Chris with those questions tomorrow.
Yep.
Article four responsibilities, this is an easy one, the second sentence should be edited to read, and this is your edit, Dick. The terms of this trust shall run with the land and impose a burden on the lot described in article two above, to be more specific. Does that additional text create any issues? Basically, no, it doesn't hurt to put that in there, so we can add that text. Now we get into article five beneficiaries. The planning board has concern with the text in the first sentence that reads that in the event that lot owner combines another lot is designated, this is where your frustration comes in, Norm. The board does not want to allow combining of lots in this development as it could alter the lot and unit count, could the board have this removed?
Okay, first of all, uh I you know, I don't have any trouble with combining the lots. If someone wants to join to the lots, that's fine.
But don't they have to go back to the process, Norm, cause those are special permits for each one of those lots?
Now, he and he and our.
Yeah, but they have special permits attached to them, don't they?
It wouldn't be breaking the the special permit, because they'll, you know, instead of five acres now, oh, it's an estate lot.
Right, they'll still meet the minimum lot size and.
I just thought as part of the estate lot, you couldn't combine.
No, you can't separate.
Separate, okay.
I mean, yeah, it would have had to be put into the decision, which I don't think it was.
Okay.
My concern is the apportioning of the trust money from the homeowners. Now, it's each each homeowner is responsible for one ninth. If those two lots are combined and now they're called one, now it's not one ninth.
That messes up the calculations.
The others.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just put something in there, if they combine them, the homeowner is responsible for both lots as part of the original uh HOA. End of discussion, you can combine them, do whatever you want, but you're still gonna be responsible for nine.
We should ask, maybe ask George what would happen in that case.
Yeah.
Because he's the lawyer.
Yeah.
Are you saying it's common that if you can you can buy two separate lots and erase the line?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want ten acres instead of five, it's.
Or furthermore, if you have two, if if you have two adjacent lots that have been under under common ownership for a certain amount of time. They they're considered combined in the eyes of zoning, I think it's five years, so. Two peo- uh one person can owe two adjac- two abutting lots for a period of five years. And in the eyes of zoning, even if an A and R doesn't come forward, that those lots are considered combined in in as far as zoning goes, so. So that might be a question for George, what would happen, what how would that affect the contributions?
Anyway, town council did not answer my question.
No.
No, because Norm, what I what I was hoping I'd said, when I read this, is I was hoping to see that um the original uh count. Cost to the HOA would stay the same, it would just be doubled for the individual that combined the lots. Because once this is signed, whatever happens after that, I don't care, there's nine lots originally, that's the end of the discussion.
So really, that's that's the main concern, as long as as long as the contributions are being made to the association.
I don't care if one guy buys all nine lots and makes it into a superstate, I don't care.
You know, somebody wants to have a horse farm, so they buy three of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they wanna buy the whole thing, so they have seclusion, that's that's fine.
I'm good with that, but understand that you're paying nine different or nine total fees for the HOA.
Okay.
It isn't, I'm gonna pay one ninth.
Maybe we need to put.
Language is gonna be in there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, the, oh, may maybe we add that, maybe we add that language, ask George to add that language in there to um.
In a legal lease form.
No, maybe that's it, maybe 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 we, I don't have to ask him what happened, because we know what would happen, we just need to make sure that. If those lots are combined, that the contributions are made.
George, put a table in there and say, lot blah blah blah, all nine of them, here's the fees, they don't change.
Alright, so the good, um next, under beneficiaries, the planning board is concerned with paragraph five, at no time does the town want to become responsible for the maintenance of this development. Does this paragraph put the town at risk of that, or does this paragraph simply reinforce the town's emergency rights of maintenance as described in article four? So, she does not recommend using the language that's found in section five, typically, we insert a provision along the lines of the one below, which makes it clear that the town. Never has an obligation to maintain the subdivision and assumes no liability for the subdivision, so have you gentlemen had a chance to go through that paragraph?
Yeah. What what I couldn't find in when I read that, John, rest of the board. Um, it talks about costs, but um and fees and all that, and what it doesn't give a remediation of. How those get paid or what they're attached to, so, you know.
What do you mean, the the?
A lien on the property, basically a mechanic's lien, the town can take out against or lien against the property.
So no language regarding. A mechanic's lien?
Or just say lien on property.
Yeah, cause there has to be some mechanism.
Yeah, and.
To access the money.
It talks about, you know, they've got thirty days, there's interning fees, so rebe- reimbursed um dated demand.
That's that's question for town council.
Yeah, 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 that's definitely, how, I think that should be added in here, I mean, the rest of it, I I was all legalese and it it.
Yeah, your eyes glazed over.
Yeah, no, it didn't, I've read too much of this in my career for contracts, but um. I just, there was no mechanism for the town to actually recover the money, is what I was getting at.
Okay.
That's it.
That's why insurance bonds are so bad.
Yeah.
So, next assessments, this is another dick you're recommending, basically, to you to add he or she, there's no harm in adding it, if you wanna add it. She claims you don't have to, but if if the board wants to add he or she, we certainly can, how's the board feel about that?
Sounds fine, okay, you you brought it up.
I know I brought it up, I just feel that, you know, the way things have been going lately, you know.
You're missing a third party, that's the other problem. Already been down that road in my company.
Alright, so finally, under article thirteen amendments and termination. The board is concerned with the last sentence that reads, the trust shall not be terminated without the private approval of the planning board, board wants to know why this would be an option. That would seem to imply that the town would then be responsible for maintenance of the items listed early in the document, the town has no interest. Board has similar concern with the last sentence in article twelve, where it reads, any amendment, alteration, or termination of this trust, these are concerning to the board and they would like. This language removed, what is your legal opinion? Says, as mentioned above, this is certainly a town's choice and we we can require the development to remove such references.
Circle the last one and say, I agree.
So basically.
Let's me, I don't want the rest of the board, I want it removed.
Yeah.
I don't want any chance for an option of.
Yeah.
Call it wiggle room.
Yeah, the only time they should fail is for other reasons, not because they have an option.
So any any choice, so that there should be no reason why the association should be terminated.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
So is the board, is the board in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome, and that's it.
Still.
Thank you, gentlemen, that was uh that was painless.
That was, let's see, two pages, Norm's word count, that was about two twenty-five hundred.
Okay, zooming in long.
Yes.
Correspondence.
Yep, we had the email from Tameka regarding delegates, email from town council, email from town council, which we've already gone over.
Onto town planner report.
So yes, I did make some revisions to the combined special permanent site plan regulations, um simply to make the language. A little bit more flexible in terms of as needed. So, plan content requirements, unless a waiver is requested by the applicant, all site plans submitted must contain the following elements. All required waivers must be listed using the form contained within. So it lets them know that they need to request waivers. So, there was also a question from Dick when we had this discussion, I was discussion discussing this with Tim before uh the rest of the board got here. There was a question as far as why certain elements are in these regulations, such as review criteria and design standards. The reason being is, there are many communities, I'm not gonna say all communities, but a lot of communities have. Things like their design guidelines, their design standards rather, and their um criteria. In their zoning bylaws, but we do not, so they kinda have to be somewhere to give, you know, to give applicants guidance. Also to let applicants in the public know what the board considers when it reviews projects such as review criteria, adequate parking and it. You know, and it may be understood, but the fact is that this is in writing somewhere in towns, and since it's not in the zoning bylaws. It's in this document, so, I mean, I was talking to Norm about it after the last meeting and um asked his opinion on it and. You know, yes, we could have these added to the zoning bylaws, but then it would have to go to town meeting, or we could just keep it here. Either way, I know it makes the document a little bit longer, but that's why it's in here, is because these are usually contained, you know, sometimes um. Towns like that have a downtown, like Stone has a town center, um you know, a more urban, larger community. What they'll have sometimes is they'll have separate design criteria for those areas in a separate document, again, Rutland does not have that. So that's why these things are in here, um like I said, yes, it does make the document a little bit longer, but. It's important to have them somewhere, and I think it is actually a good thing to have them in this document, because if the board wants to change them. Does not have to go to town meeting to change them, or add to them, or subtract from them, so. Oh, the other thing I added in, um application process, the following items are required capital to be spent to the planning community development office by the applicant unless. Otherwise noted. So, that's under application requirements, the only potential for a waiver is in the fee, and there's a note saying if there's. Waiver from the fee that the full amount shall be paid, and then whatever's waived will be, if it's waived, will be returned.
John, I gotta ask.
Yes.
The last time these fees were done or reviewed was by me about ten years ago.
We can we can certainly look at them if if you'd like to.
I think, Norm, you asked me to do it like ten years ago, and I looked and went and I compared them and. And we upped we upped some of these because they were off, but there were some that we were either equal or a little bit more than some of our surrounding communities. I don't know what's changed in ten years.
Significant.
Yeah.
Above.
So now, I mean, just one that I can think of that we deal with all the time, and I was talking to this potential applicant about today, was the special permit fee. You may look at that and say, on the surface, five hundred dollars is a lot of money, but you consider that the fact that we take the cost of the legal advertisement out of that. So it doesn't end up being a five hundred dollar fee, it ends up being about three hundred and forty dollars, because about a hundred sixty goes to the. The legal ads, so it can be a little bit deceiving, because yes, there are towns that have an application fee, but. The the public hearing notice charge doesn't come out of that, they get charged separately for that, so. That's something that is is wrapped in, that is included in that fee, so. It may seem like five hundred dollars for a special permit, like an accessory dwelling unit or a major home occupation, is a little bit prohibitive, but when you consider the fact that. The legal advertisement fee comes out of that, it's not so bad, so, I mean, we could certainly look at the fees and see if there's areas where we can tweak or reduce.
I think it's the other way around.
Increase?
Increase as well.
Losing money.
Yeah. No, but I would like to build our coffer a little bit higher in case we need something. Okay, alright.
So, so yeah, certainly if the board wants me to do a survey, and it doesn't hurt to take a look at them.
I mean, Norm, my 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 concern are A and Rs, cause they seem to be taking a lot more time than they have in the past.
Yeah.
And then this the a special permit, those are like the only, I I think when I looked at this before. The the plans, the residential and all that stuff, we were either equal or above what our surrounding communities, but those two were the. I think in the past, our special permits were like two fifty and we raised it to five hundred, or it was three hundred, we raised it to five, something like that.
So before, when it was two fifty, did the legal ads still come out of that, or was it separate, it still came out of that?
Came out of it.
So basically, you.
Worcester Telegram didn't charge what it charges now either, so.
Right. So, yeah, I mean.
I just, those are the two that that have struck me as three hundred dollars for an A and R.
I I would, I will.
Hundred thousand dollar piece of acreage.
I mean, I I will agree that A and Rs, yes, because all the easy land to develop is gone, so yes. The A and Rs have become more and more complicated and um it seems like more and more we have to get legal opinions on.
Correct.
A and Rs, so, it's something we can look at for sure.
And special permits have been taking a lot of time between you and Tameka, so I really don't. Your time's covered by the town budget, but hers is not, so.
If I could pay, if I could play devil's advocate, the taxpayer would say, well, that's why we pay taxes, isn't it? That's why we have staff to review our stuff and to look at stuff, staff is not paid consultants, so. If, so there could be an argument to be made for that, again, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate, and the other thing is, we wanna make sure that we're not. Being unduly harsh in terms of fees.
Let's all wanna check it out, see, I mean, if if Holden's got a a special permit of fifteen hundred dollars, and Paxton is nine hundred. Then and our surrounding communities are above us by one by two times or something like that, we should think about coming up some.
And the other thing, and the other thing I internally that I don't want to harm is, we've talked about this. Um we're trying to raise the standard of plans that are received, and with that comes increased cost to have an engineered plan, so I don't. I, that's really the focus, so we can look at fees absolutely, and if it's appropriate to raise some, we can, I just wanna be very careful. Because, you know, someone who's putting in an uh an accessory dwelling unit. You know, it's like they're already having to do engineered plans and they're having to do all this in addition to, you know, the materials and lumber's gone up and everything, so. I just wanna be very cautious in raising fees too much.
Yeah.
Just, this is a little bit off off the subject, you know, bringing up, you know, more complete and detailed plans. In these regulations, maybe this is. Would it be totally unreasonable to include, let's say, a sample plan? That's tough, just to, I'm thinking about, you know.
You're talking about a standard, Norm, somewhat a generic standard?
No, I I don't know, maybe call it a minimum standard.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But just something that, so when when Joe Blow off the street comes in, and he has this penciled in drawing, which we have seen. That we can say, you know, no, that's not, it needs to be something that looks more like this.
Now, that's a good idea, it's a very good idea, again, playing playing devil's advocate, what I've seen from people so far, because. I was just sharing this with Tameka and Tim today, is because of the because of the past and because of that. Um because of that standard, the the way it's the way it's been said or not said in the past. I, this is the first time I've worked in where every single applicant that comes in my office, and I show them, like, the gentleman came in my office today. For two oh four Barry Paxton Road, they're gonna wanna add um a couple of bays in that back building for to service automobiles. Whereas now it's just a used car dealership, so um they're gonna go for a special permit. I showed them the plans for one ninety-one Barry Paxton Road, which are not complicated by any means, and they looked at me and they said, well, we did this in Walpole. And they didn't make us do anything like that, which I know is a lie, cause I've worked and rent them, which is right near Walpole. I know the standards Walpole has, they're close to Boston, so every single person that comes to my office when I show them that plan says. Not only, now, I I could handle it better if they said, we've never been made to do this in Rutland before, cause I get that, I understand that. What bothers me is now they're bringing other towns, which I know is not true, because I know the standard, so. That's the that's the thing I'm battling administratively right now, is people giving me a hard time as far, just just with a very basic, simple plan, so. I have to think about that, because we certain, because it.
RDIC, their engineers had a great plan set, I mean, I was so enthused with.
Cause cause plans are different.
Well, these guys were complete.
Hold on, but when someone has to submit for an accessory dwelling unit, or my or our home occupation is different from a motorcycle repair shop. Or something like that, so, so I mean, what kind of would we use, even though it wasn't approved? One ninety, would we use the the car wash on Palmagussett, or would we, you know, what do we use, I mean, a car wash versus a motorcycle repair shop, it's. What do we use as a standard, that would be my question, and because we we have so few right now on record.
I would, I wouldn't even try to use something that we've got, I'd give Kevin Quinn a call and say. I'd give Kevin Quinn a call and say, Kevin, what can we, what standards have you?
Some kind of a generic.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I would literally task, I would use our monies from our revolving fund to say, Kevin, we're looking for a standard. We don't want it to be, you know, so tight that we can't do anything with it, but is there a generic? I used to call it the kitchen sink, it's got everything and you can cut and paste out of it.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be engineering textbook.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it verbiage?
I could show them, what's that?
See, for example, an engineered document, you just say, well, like these plan requirements.
See, we have all the requirements.
But, but what's, but, but what's, what's funny is, I've never had to do this in any other town. The, the people hire an engineer, the engineer looks at the requirements, and they give me a plan. They fulfill, they just fulfill them, it's, it's, it's very.
Farther you go west, you will find that this, that is more of a truth statement than.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I, yeah, so I could contact Kevin Quinn and see if he could put.
That was, I was thinking, Kevin's got, Kevin's done designs, I mean, he's done commercial designs for buildings.
Yeah.
I mean, even the design, that, one of the best commercial designs that I've seen is when they did that marijuana facility next to the laundry. That thing was so detailed, it had a great legend, it had all the documentation, that was a phenomenal design. I don't wanna use that as an example, but that could be one that.
Well, and also, when engineers do a plan, that's proprietary, so I don't wanna necessarily be using as example something that's a proprietary document, so. I don't wanna get into hot water with anybody. So somebody say, hey, I don't want you using my plan, that's my plan, you know, so.
That's true too.
So we can ask Kevin Quinn, I can do that. Yeah.
It'd be interesting.
It's just an idea.
It's a good idea.
It just, it, it does seem, you know, we do have a lot of people that come in with good intentions, but they really just don't have a clue.
Gotta help them, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, that's it, you know, that, that, that's a help.
Well, they're either from town, lived here for a while, or they're new, so you get the kind of the two different.
Or if they just have no experience in land use or anything like that, they might look at, you know, what we have down here, forget, you know, where's the scale and blah blah, probably boundaries, dimensions, and some people like this, they say, what the hell is all that?
Well, see, that's where they take that and they hand it to their engineer, and say, here you go. See, and Tamika and I had this conversation, and, and the issue you run into is sometimes people don't want to spend the money, and even though I understand that, you know, you have to, if you're gonna do a project, we have to, you know, the board has to know that whatever conditions, like I mentioned these gentlemen that, that are gonna be tenants at Mal's, auto, you know, auto shop, used auto, they're gonna be putting in a new sign, they said they wanna improve the landscaping, I said, okay. I said, you're the applicant, we need to know that the owner's on board with this too, because when we come to you and I said, nothing earth shattering, but we say, listen, could you clean up the front, could you put up a new sign, we need to know what's gonna happen.
We typically want a stamped, engineered stamped set of drawings from a design, we just, back of the envelope doesn't work anymore.
Yeah.
Too many requirements from the state.
You know, it's that saying, it's the cost of doing business.
Yeah, I know.
It's the cost of doing business, you know.
Is there a scale where, so you wanna build a chicken coop versus, you know.
Yeah, well, certainly, certainly if someone's building a chicken coop, it's not.
You're not gonna demand.
No, it's not gonna, and, and I walked, I usually walk them through that, I told these gentlemen today, I said, listen, I expect to see a lot of waivers from you gentlemen, because I expect that some of these.
Some of those Keith, you won't even have to, you wouldn't have to go to John, like building a shed or a chicken coop, that's through the building inspector. And typically you just have to have a, I mean, when I built my shed, I basically pulled, I got AutoCAD and did the drawings myself, and took them to the building inspector, and because I had setbacks and all that in there, he goes, obviously, I, I was probably one of the first ones to do that with a shed, but I had the dimensions, the setbacks, my property lines, how far it was from the building, so there wasn't any air intake, and, I'll not, who was our building inspector back then? No, before him.
Harold?
Nope, before.
Not Harry?
Harry, Harry looked at him and goes, you know, kid, you did a lot here, and I'm like, okay, I thought this was the minimum. So, and he signed off on him and I was off and running, but yeah, that's what, and again, that was those type of things, you wouldn't have to go to John for it, it would just go to the building inspector.
So, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying, we're trying to be aware of people's financial limitations, but at the same time, establish a standard, a minimum standard that is acceptable and is gonna protect the applicant and the town, to make sure we have good plans that we can go out and look at and make sure that things are done right, rather than like you said, on the back of an envelope with not to scale. How does the, how's the building commissioner enforce a potential zoning violation? If you don't have things to scale and you don't have them.
He has no documentation to go back to, and therein lies the problem.
Exactly, so it's just, it's, it's a slippery slope, so yes, I will talk to Kevin Quinn and see if he can come up with something. So the other thing I have, and Norm made a reference to this before, is I had a meeting with CMRPC last week regarding the economic development brochure. And during that conversation, Kerry from CMRPC happened to mention that gentleman who's the executive director of Mass Hire, Jeff Turgeon, ex rugby player, they were looking, the Worcester Men's Club was looking for a location to potentially build a rugby stadium. So, I happened to look at the brochure, the marketing brochure for Rutland Heights, and lo and behold, one of the suggested uses in the economic development brochure said rugby stadium.
Drive in, make a left, and there's your rugby stadium.
There you go, so.
And then we got that.
I sent, I sent Jeff Turgeon an email, and luckily, he and I can get along very well, even though I played for Clark and he played for Worcester State, and when we played Worcester State, it was always very violent and very chippy, because they didn't, you know, they viewed us as the rich spoil kids.
You've got all your teeth, so it wasn't that bad.
Well, I, I told, I told Jeff, I said, I wanted to scream to them, listen, I'm like you, I commuted to Rhode Island College for two years, my parents took out a second mortgage on their home to send me to, to Clark for two years, and then I paid for my own grad school, so. I'm with you, I'm one of you, please, take it easy on me, so anyway, but he and I had been talking, and I, you know, the conversations went very well, I mentioned how our population has increased, you know, since nineteen ninety, ninety-one percent. I think it's thirty-eight or forty percent since two thousand, so, so. I forwarded the emails to Austin, and we will potentially set up a meeting, and he mentioned that he would actually like to establish a location to be the headquarters for the New England Rugby Football Union. So, that might be a nice thing to have here.
So then both parcels, put the headquarters next to the gas station and put the rugby field across from it, we're done and sold.
And they would be, they would be athletic fields, that would be.
Where am I gonna put the post office? Uh, right next to the rugby headquarters, so they can mail stuff.
There would be athletic fields, that would be available for rent, and there would be, kind of, he mentioned that there would be a bonus for the town that, you know, that could be worked out as a condition, that the, the town could potentially use fields at an extremely discounted rate potentially, so. The conversations have just started.
Good.
So, so we'll see where they go, but that could be a really exciting thing. And I've also been in contact preliminary with, preliminarily with Holden Urgent Care about the other side of the access drive, that five acre parcel that's nice and flat on the right as you drive in.
Yep, nice gas station.
Yeah, I talked to the gentleman and emailed him and his business partner, and they, they said, well.
Moving it from down where Rite Aid is to?
No, 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 no. No, building a new one here. Because, yes, the one in Holden is only eight miles away, but I see it when I come in in the morning and the traffic coming the other way, it takes me twelve minutes to get from there to here in the morning.
That'd be a good use.
Coming the other way, it's at least twenty minutes, so. It was actually Keith's suggestion to me when he and I first met, one of the first conversations we had, so. We're starting that conversation, see if that goes anywhere, and he asked me, he said, I said, you'd be, you'd have a blank slate. They don't need all five and a half usable acres, he said, well, would the town be, would, would the town allow us to build like a mixed use building, and I said, are you kidding me? Urgent care with other things?
With a post office, I'm good.
Awesome, so, we've started those conversations and we'll see where those go, so.
Good.
Two potential leads to, and I mentioned to both entities that, you know, my, my message from, you know, when Austin first interviewed me, he said, what kind of non-residential development would be good for Rutland, I said, something that serves the local residents in the surrounding region, because obviously Rutland's not gonna be the home to a new, you know, Rhythm outlets or, you know, big box retail, nor do, does Rutland want to be.
Unless they put Route forty-nine in, then it'll work.
Yeah.
I'm a dreamin', okay.
You just look for any opportunity to throw Route forty-nine in, don't you?
You gotta get that route to New Hampshire, so we can have the people from New Hampshire come working.
Then we put a liquor, then we put a liquor store in.
Oh, there we go. So, so anyway, so I think these two things, the urgent care, mixed use, and the rugby element, are, the, the stadium or the fields, are things that are in line with, what I understand is the town's vision and what would be appropriate for the town, is things that would serve local residents and the surrounding region, and not be something that's gonna draw people in from, you know, all over New England necessarily, which, you know, and stuff that would be compatible and, and still maintain the character of the town.
My only request, have you talked to Mr. Sullivan too, is he in the loop?
Not yet, no, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far, so we're trying to just, you know.
I'm glad, because.
Because there hasn't been any, if there's, if there's serious interest in looking at properties, that's when we'll bring them in, but right now, which, which is just preliminary.
Okay.
Henceforth, that is why I would like to have seen a little bit of money from the sale.
Used for cleanup?
For cleanup.
I agree with you, Dick.
Honest to Pete for crying out loud, what a.
What's that?
You couldn't have used it for that though, Dick, it has to be something that you had to borrow for for more than five years.
Well, we'll borrow the money for five years just to clean the place up and have it looking.
Get a contract, get a maintenance contract for five years.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm very.
Honest to Pete, if you drove in there and they had all the trees down, and made the place look like it did a long time ago, holy Christ, you would not, you would have every Tom, Dick and Harry in it.
That would be your sales pitch for the rugby and for the urgent care.
So, I feel comfortable mentioning these things, because one of the uses is in the market brochure and the urgent care, but again, these, the talks have not progressed far enough to actually take it to the next level, if something, if something materializes.
At least you are doing that.
Yeah.
And that's, how do you do it unless you get it out there, you've, you gotta get it out there.
Honest to Pete, so, right now, they're just very preliminary, and like I said, if they advance any further, then absolutely will. Bring them in.
John, you're doing the same thing Dave did, was preliminary, putting it out there with Mike Nicholson and we found Harbor Classic Homes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's all good. It turns into projects that could and will help out the town. Get that, and get that, get that property off of the registers and sold.
Yeah.
And tax dollars.
Where are they doing rugby right now, in Worcester?
Oh, well, I know when I was at Clark, they used to play the field down on Lake Quinsigamond, because we played there as well, and we actually, we actually used their practice field, and if it's the same practice field, granted this is back in the early nineties, but their practice field was, I forget even where it was, it was up in a, we had to, it, it was a three mile drive from Clark University to our practice field, because we had nothing on campus, so, it was, it was wherever, it was with.
It's a lot of bleeding back to the dorms.
Actually, actually, one day I ran to practice, so, so yeah. Yeah, and he asked me, he goes, oh, we still, we, we still have some old ruggers who get together and play once in a while, I'm like, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those days are long gone.
First off, my health insurance isn't gonna cover that, and my wife is not enjoyable.
I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, I remember the day I decided I wasn't gonna play rugby past college. We were walking on the field, Worcester Men's Club was walking out, and there was this big guy about six two, six three, his nose was flat and pushed to the side, and he had a big scar on his lip, and I just looked at him, I said, yeah, I don't wanna look like that when I'm.
Party's over.
Four years, good enough, thank you.
My retirement papers.
Exactly, so, so anyway, we'll see where these talks go.
Good.
Well, see, public comment section, anything?
Leah, any comment? She's mixing chemicals right now.
Hearing none, all in agreement of motion.
Uh, not yet. Oh, we're almost out.
See the sign, the map rather up there?
I love that.
I donated one to Central Mass Regional Planning, and they're gonna be picking it up hopefully in a short period of time. And I wanted, I wanted one in here for Concom planning board and select board if they need to talk about wherever things are. But I just wanna let you know, the green, of course, is DCR, and the orange on there is Zone A.
By the way, I have a copy, I have a map like this in my office, and we now have a plotter where we can make a color copy of that.
I had, yeah.
You know where that would go, good, Dick, right over where the door was.
Well, I, I don't, you know, in my opinion, that, that, I, I just feel that if you have something here that when you're having meetings, Concom or anybody else, walk up and point it out or whatever, I mean.
That's an official's.
That's from DCR.
So it's official state map, so it's legitimate.
And when I requested, and I was shocked, like I, I don't know if I told you guys before, Way River, I was on the advisory committee, and I told Dave, I says, can I have a map, please, showing your property in Rutland? And all of a sudden for crying out loud, Barry, Ocam and Hubbardston, they all wanted one.
Well, it shows that a third of Rutland is DCR property.
Yeah, it's actually a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I'm just doing a guesstimate by, by just.
But I'm, I'm just saying, you know, when you.
There's a, there's a lot of Zone A property too in Rutland, woo baby.
Yes, and the Board of Assessors, Amy, is, after July first, will be coming up with a new map with all sixty-one and APR properties on it, and the, hopefully, the select board will appoint us on the I Commission again, so we can try to get this thing where we're gonna designate which pieces of sixty-one property is number one versus ten or whatever.
Oh, do a priority list.
Yes, it's something that we wanna do, but.
Like Joe did with the roads, when he had Stan Tech do that, come up with a priority list of repairs.
So.
Excellent.
Things that we're trying to do in the future, so I just feel that I'd like to try to.
I guess we got the chairman here, should we ask her, is it okay to put it in this room? Because this is really.
Yes.
Oh, the cable. Okay, so, Pete's the cable chairman, right?
I've asked Peter.
Paul is, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, the press has already been put out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just think it's a good thing to have in here.
And I've, I felt that it would give a little bit of color in here. I'm sorry, but it does look very pale in here.
Would be good too. Trying to work on my tan, Dick.
You can take it down and like bring it to the table as well, because if it's too far, you see it all.
Oh, then you can use, I've got these at the house, they're these little things with the rollers underneath where you can put it up, and the rollers actually come back and clamp onto and hold it, so there's no pins or anything. I could send, send those or bring one in and show.
Magnets, I don't know.
No, they're not, yeah, but see, you got a wall there, this basically you attach to the wall like with the stickum stuff, and then it's got these, if you wanna call them metal rollers in them, so when you put the paper up, it goes up and then the rollers flap down and basically lock it in place, and there's no, there's no permanency to it, so that would work good for that. It's good up to like twenty-five pounds, and I don't think that.
That doesn't weigh that, that's for sure.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.